We do the citizens like of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, here's the special consecration clause. First thing that we can talk about is our ordinance for temporary appropriations passed tonight so that we can get to Julie. It'll be ordinance number 2013-19, an ordinance accepting attached temporary appropriations for fiscal year 2014. Whereas it has come to the attention of council of the village of Betsville that it needs to adopt temporary appropriations for fiscal year 2014, and whereas council desires to adopt the tax appropriations for the fiscal year 2014 for the village of Betsville, and whereas it is deemed necessary in order to provide for the preservation of public peace, health, and safety of the village of Betsville, Ohio, and its citizens, and for efficient day-to-day operations of the village. Now therefore, it being today by the councils of the village of Betsville, county of Seneca, state of Ohio, section one attached temporary appropriations for the fiscal year 2014 are hereby adopted, passed, and duly authenticated by the mayor and the village of Betsville. That's what we have to vote on, too.
So make a motion.
Motion is suspend the law.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Scott?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion to a doubt is presented by?
I will.
Can I present by?
I will.
Bill?
Yep.
Joyce? Bill?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Okay, now on to police. Looks like we have a police force here. Uh, who's spoke?
I am.
Okay.
I do have something, whenever, whenever you...
Are you ready for me, or?
Yeah.
I prepared something for, I mean, there's five of the six best that pissed off this here.
Why is Melissa not here? Did you invite her?
Should I have to?
You don't have?
I, I, I don't feel as though it's my responsibility, I guess, I mean, she knew about me, correct? Okay, okay, okay. Well, first and foremost, I'd like to thank everyone for allowing us to attend. And I don't only speak on behalf of myself, but I speak on behalf of four of other Betsville police officers. In light of the most recent events, I believe it's not fair that the member, I, I believe it would be fair if this member of council had true understanding of the events leading up to tonight's meeting. This is not a revelation and attempt to change her mind, but it is my belief that the member of councils have made a decision based on faulty information. It is my belief that the mayor has failed to relay information to council members. As you can see, the folders that Officer Baker's gonna pass out is everything that I'm about ready to go over. I and four other Betsville police officers met with the mayor and the village administrator, which is not currently present. In regards to the malfeasance, the misfeasance, and sexual harassment conducted by the previous administration of the Betsville Police Department, we spent nearly three hours explaining to these two individuals our concerns. We requested that these individuals turn the information over to the village council for review. These issues were addressed to the mayor and the village council, we're not, we're not low-level issues that could be solved with a simple meeting. The previous administration of the Betsville Police Department has used the police department as propaganda to promote a business that does not affiliate with the police department. There have been phone calls left on the answering machine, payment for services rendered dropped off at the police department. There's been unapproved policy written and threats of discipline towards this policy. The previous administration attempted to force a quota for citations issued versus warnings issued. The previous administration also told us to stop certain people because of, of personal issues they may or may not have, have had against those individuals. The village of Betsville has paid the Betsville Police Department's administration while attending training, and they attempted to charge the Betsville police officers to share the information that they obtained in the training for their own personal gain. At no time was there any training offered to any other officer. The time sheets and log sheets from the previous administration of the Betsville Police Department are visual proof that there's foul play. I would highly, highly recommend that you do a full and complete audit of the time sheets and log sheets from the police department. We as a, we as a department were concerned, and keep in mind, those are just allegations, nothing to state true fact. These concerns were also expressed to the mayor and the village administrator, which the village administrator had prior knowledge of. Please, please understand, this is not an attempt to undermine your decision from the previous meeting. We gained nothing from this inquiry. But, but we, the village, uh, we want the village to be aware of the unlawful activity conducted within the past couple of years. It would be in the village's best interest to, to address this formal complaint and investigate it. Like I said before, it's not, it is my belief that council was not aware of these issues prior to last week's meeting, and for that, I sincerely do apologize if the information wasn't related to you. I also believe that when the information was presented to the mayor and the village administrator, they took it upon themselves to share the information to the administration of the Betsville Police Department, which in turn led to the resignation of the previous chief. It is not fair to our officers, it is not fair to you that our officers are being crucified and blamed for his resignation. After the review of the complaints listed above, you will see that it was his own doings that led to his resignation. If anyone knew chief, you would've known that he was a fighter, and he would've never given up on something if he were truly innocent. In life, there are three sides to every story, their side, my side, and the so-called truth. And I find it very, very unsettling that council has only listened to one side of the story and passed judgment without inquiring the others. Everything stated above can be proven as fact and should be considered. In closing, I have obtained legal counsel who is willing to move forward, in this case, to further neglect of the above complaints.
Is there any else up here?
Question?
Questions?
Yeah, so we have a look at the facts first, I mean, what, again, I just, I just, you just gotta make the statement for three sides of the story, so, okay, we heard your story, we know the other side's story, and we're gonna find the truth. And, uh, I think as, as perplexing to us, I mean, I'm not sure where this is all coming from, after his issues, we need to understand the issues, but I'm not understanding what this ramification is, what, because when we made the offer to Nick last week, was, issue was that usually second command and the whole thing, and that's, that's where the problem comes now, we've got this other conflict going on, so I'm trying to understand this whole thing through a bigger picture. I mean, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm open to the facts, but I, I don't like being, you know...
Oh, absolutely, it's not, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't by any means at all.
I mean, this, this point of legal, you know, this, you know, coming to us through a litigation thing, I have a problem with that.
Absolutely, and I spoke to my attorney many times about it, I mean, it's, it's, it's not fair to you guys. I mean, we've expressed our concerns to Gary, and he sat last council meeting in the police department, and I asked him if council was aware of the issues that were going on, he looked at me, stared straight in the face, and said, "Absolutely." Now, is this the first time you've ever heard of this, if you don't mind me asking, is this the first, first of these allegations?
Several of these, this is the first ever. I mean, I was aware of some issues, but like I said, I didn't have all the details, like anybody else does, but, but again, you know, again, it's your story, I mean, I don't have all the facts either.
And that's, that's all I, all I wanted to provide for you, it's, it's not about, it's not about personal gain, and it's not about nothing of that nature, it's about the difference between right and wrong.
We, we gained, we gained nothing out of the situation, our, our decision's already made. But what we gained out of this is that you guys have all the information now. Uh, before, you guys didn't have all the information, you made a decision based on the information you had, which is fine. And we, we want nothing more than that, we just want you guys to be fully aware, you guys are entitled to all the information.
So I, let me answer this, what is this decision we made? I mean, we offered you a position.
We offered you a position.
So what is, what is the decision that we made that is so counterproductive to what you guys are seeing tonight?
It, it's not more or less a decision you guys made, it's more or less that we want you to get, you guys, go ahead.
Hold it, because this, what's your name now?
Sean Beckley.
This gentleman just made a statement that this council rushed to the decision.
That is not what I said, you want me to read it to you? I'd be more than happy to. It says, "This revelation is not an attempt to change your mind, but it is my belief that the council has made a decision based on faulty information," is what I said.
And the decision, what is, what is the faulty decision we made?
The, the decision...
I, maybe I can address that.
Yeah.
And I'm not speaking for them, I, I don't know what's in their head. I'll be the first to admit, coming into council next month as a council member, I've been doing a ton of reading and talking to some people on the Ohio Revise Code. Village of Betsville has no charter, so we have to go by the ORC.
That's right.
ORC, in my reading to date, and you can correct me when I'm wrong, and there will be times, trust me, from my reading, you not only made a mistake, but you went in violation of ORC by putting stipulations on appointing a public official within the village. You appointed Nick to continue as acting chief, and you made stipulations, can't do that, kids.
Excuse me.
You...
He made stipulations.
No, no, no.
Us.
Video shows that the stipulations were made by the village that you didn't want Sean, for whatever reason, and that was never answered, as acting chief. So that's the only thing I'm addressing. Okay, we'll go back and watch the video, I have no problem.
I'll watch the video.
Beauty of video.
That's not in the video.
That you didn't...
What happened was, is Nick came in and announced that he wanted a package deal, is that...
No, that's where Scott's words, package deal. In what, in what meeting, I apparently wasn't there, you remember me being there?
I watched the video, I wasn't there either.
What, what I announced is that I wanted him as my captain.
You said, you said, "I need..."
Because I needed somebody there for it.
In what, in what meeting, I, I don't think I was in that meeting, apparently.
You weren't paying attention, he was busy texting.
Uh, okay, personnel issues, whatever you wanna... Was I in that meeting?
Yes.
Yes, we're standing right there.
Was it the December meeting?
Yes.
The 10th, or the 3rd?
We were just there the other day, yeah.
Well, I'll have to re-watch it then, maybe I missed that part. I told you, I'm willing to be told when I'm wrong. My point...
Well, we allow whoever's chief of police to create a position inside the village.
Do you not know that it's the chief's duty to appoint the captain?
Can I create a, a new job inside the Betsville?
I didn't know he was creating a new job, it's his duty to appoint the captain.
He would, and we was gonna make him a captain, that would be creating a...
Have we ever had a captain before?
Unless it involves, unless it involves a wage increase or a new paid position, that was not part of the deal. He was just making an appointment or a promotion, he is allowed to do that, you ought to brush up on the ORC, highly recommend it.
You're gonna let us know.
Oh, you trust, you, you can bet your life I will let you know.
The, the issue that I basically said is that I wanted somebody behind me I can trust, and I...
And we ask you, you know, you say you don't trust Melissa, and you've never really worked with her, so how in the hell do you know?
I went to the police, I went to the police academy.
And you, you know what, you're the one, I think, that's causing a lot of this, because, you know, yes.
Um, I know Melissa personally, I've known her for a lot of my life, she is my neighbor. I personally feel that, and I have talked, discussed this with Gary, I have no, I have no issue against Melissa, because she is my friend, outside of work, I know her. The issue that I do have with Melissa being acting chief is that Don will, Don runs Melissa, and we've all seen that at the department, we work with them, so we all know. Don will be running Melissa, and that's something that a lot of us are concerned about.
We didn't even say anything about, she might be acting chief right now, but we have got big feelers out for a new police chief.
But I think that's what some of the main issue is.
May, may I ask why it is, I mean, this is the first time I've ever met you, and I'm pretty concerned about me.
I know, and see, this is another problem, we, we as a council have, there are how many of you here? We don't know, we know Nick.
Absolutely.
We know absolutely nobody else except Melissa and Don. Nobody's been to a council meeting, nobody has told us who you people are, we wouldn't know you if we passed you on the street.
Absolutely.
And you are employed by us.
Okay, I, I, I agree with that, and, and if me not attending every council meeting, I, I sincerely apologize for that, I do have a full-time job and a wife and a kid, and I go to school full-time.
So do we all.
I, okay.
We're not saying everyone.
I get that.
You missed, missed the point, I think the point, the point being is that, you know, as, as a community, we're all trying to work together.
I understand that completely, but, but if you've never met me, you just sat here and pointed your finger at me and said that I am the reason for this, may I ask why?
I don't know, I just, I just, well, maybe I should come right out to it, I don't like it.
Why's that?
I don't know.
That, that's fair, everybody's entitled to an opinion.
Because you told you things about him.
That's exactly why you don't like me, that's exactly why I don't.
This is why we want to give you the information, because you have a one-sided story, you have a direct line to what's going on, and, and you're only getting one-sided story. I have no problem with anybody in council, I have no problem with you not wanting me as chief because of the stipulation that I put on it supposedly, but I don't care one bit, but I want you guys to know that as of, as somebody who's got kids in this community, and somebody who works in this community, and somebody who lives outside the community, goes to church in this community, I want you guys to know that as a council, you need to have all the information. This is not something that I'm getting any personal gain out of. We make minimum wage here, I only requested 16 hours a month, but I want you guys, and I think you guys need to have all the information, not just partial information, but you guys made, you guys basically said that you want Melissa as number two. I'm telling you, here's the information why I cannot do it. It's not because I want him as the next guy down, I, I can't have her underneath me, here's the information why I can't, okay?
I, the, the, the captain position to me means nothing, it, it really, really don't. I told Nick two and a half years ago that I wasn't gonna leave until he left. I have no ties whatsoever to Betsville, not one bit, um, except for this guy. I mean, you, you cannot find a better person for the job for this guy. He's been, he's been here for nine years, he's got family, this man was willing to do a chief's job for $7.85 an hour, two Saturdays a week, and every other hour that he spent in this place was on his own time. Where are you gonna find somebody with that much passion and that much love for this village? You won't, I don't care how hard you look.
And that's the reason why we offered him the position.
With stipulations that you can't do.
We, we are the ones that set up how this police department runs. And how would you feel if you walked in and found out on a Betsville letterhead that yesterday you were second in command, and today you've got somebody over top of you, and it wasn't authorized by this council?
If, if you cared about that much, you should've took that into your job. Your job is to appoint somebody to put in charge of that department.
If I'm not...
That person's job is to do the rest. And run the department, and do what's right for the department.
Exactly. And, this may be a big surprise to you, but according to ORC, you know who's acting chief right now? It's not Melissa, Sean Beckley.
Why, is he the captain?
Because Nick turned it down, and he got promoted.
Nick promoted me to captain?
By protocol.
He's allowed...
Read the ORC, folks. You can't go by what you wanna do, you gotta go by what ORC says.
I, mine, what I don't understand, if you were just acting, and until you were made the chief, how could you make all these decisions without being the chief?
Because it's an official act, when they offer me the acting chief's position, when he says you're in charge, you take, you step in and take care, you take care of things, until you guys approve it, it's acting chief.
Matter of fact, Nick gave Gary a copy of my letter of promotion that Nick presented you with.
And I said, everything has to be approved by council.
That is not what she said, can I finish? He accepted it with, with grace, I mean, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of wishy-washy stuff in here, not just by the previous administration of the police department.
So in other words, right now, tonight, if we don't do what you say, what are you gonna do, you're gonna sue us?
Is that what I said?
I, no, I'm just saying, if, if we don't do what you're saying right now...
I didn't know that they said anything they want you to do.
Actually, absolutely, okay? What I want you to do, is I want you to look in that folder and base your decision off that, that's all I want you to do. That's it, that's all I'm asking, that's it.
Well, let's begin this, we're gonna make a decision tonight, because here's, here's the truth matter, is that we're gonna, we're gonna look at the facts and get the information.
I don't expect...
If you think we're gonna, if you think we're gonna make a decision, and, and...
No, no, and all we, all we asked from the beginning is you just look at the facts. We don't, we don't want any decision rendered at all, I just want you guys to have all the facts. That's the only reason we showed up here today, we want you guys to have all the facts, now you do, okay? It's, it's not about making decisions, it's not about doing anything because, you know, that, obviously, that boat is sailed, we don't care. We just want you to have the facts.
I'm not sure if we have all the facts, I think we have facts that are presented to us right now.
Well, I'm sorry?
As I said, we have facts that are presented to us.
These, these, all these facts are here are taken directly from the police department, which are public knowledge.
Okay, let's, what about all the, the facts of all the letterheads and all the, all the...
You have, you have statements from five of the six best police officers, all the letterheads, go ahead, with what you're saying.
Well, I mean, we got, last week, we had the statements on the letterheads, with, you know, the new positions and all this stuff, that were, again, talking to our council.
Sure.
I mean, talking to our legal council, I mean, there's, there's, there's a problem with that, so, that, that was our presentation from him last week, so, again, so, there's, there's a lot more going on here, and just because you guys have a position doesn't mean that's, that's where it's, where it's gonna go.
Absolutely.
And I just want you to understand that, we, we gotta make a decision for the village.
We don't, we don't want to go any...
Absolutely.
We just want you guys to have all the facts, we are, we are gaining nothing out of this, and we care one, not one bit about what happens after this, we just want to deliver the facts to you, and we can walk away.
And we thank you for giving us this opportunity.
It is our job as police officers to report this type of activity, here's the activity, and we can walk away, we have no problem.
Now, please, respect the council enough to give us time to go over the facts and digest it, and find what we'll talk about.
That's exactly what we said, we just want you to have the facts.
Now, we have an open meeting with this, we have a... Be brought up for executive session, what are we gonna do? We're gonna be going, I mean, very...
We gotta look it over, there's a lot here.
We're gonna sit down and talk to Rick, we'll probably come up in a meeting, we may go into the executive session. And we'll come out, and we'll talk about it. And we'll come out, and we'll talk about what our findings are, that's what we're gonna do. I just figured line item by line item, we'll get it through. Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
And that's what we want, thank you very much.
And if I may request, and it's simply a request, since this will easily go into next year when I'm on council, I request that I be included on any executive sessions or any public meetings or notified of any discussion whatsoever.
You're gonna have a meeting until February anyway, so there you go, mister.
How about pre-meetings, like meetings that are off the book or phone calls in between people? Can't do that, well, I know that it's being done.
Excuse me, let me inform you of something, we can talk to each other anytime we want to, as long as there isn't three of us together, so whoever...
Well, to, to a degree, you're right, but if you make one phone call to one, and the same phone call to the other, and the same, ORC says it's the same thing, you might want to start reading.
Well, unless you've got my phone tapped, or our phones tapped, you don't know who that is.
I didn't even bring your name up, did I?
No, but you, the innuendo was yours, I, I...
How did I infer that it was you?
Well, let's see, in here it says, do you know how, uh, uh, village council members are named? Do you really know how they're named, and I mean...
Does that mention you?
No, it doesn't have to mention us, we're on council here.
I don't know what you're referring to, but go ahead.
Well, you ought, you ought to read your own Facebook page, you know?
I do.
I'll tell you, we will take it in, we'll, we'll discuss, and it'll be...
Yes. Well, we want, we want to thank you guys for at least letting us present our information, and you will hear...
Oh, you're welcome.
Yeah, you, you will hear no more information from us, I mean, we'll, unless you request this, I plan on being at no more meetings, um, but we just wanted to make sure you guys have all the information, this way you guys can, you know, confer with somebody else if you guys wish to, and you guys have all the information to deal with, or all our information at least, so.
I, I do have a question, uh, my name is Amy Dickman, and I've been here since July. And when I first hired on and was sworn in, I was hired in under the previous administration, and I was told I was part-time. When I swore in and I filled out paperwork for the village, I was told I was part-time. So I've filled out paperwork now twice, and since July, I have not received a paycheck. And anytime I would inquire about it, it would get to the, oh, the first time it was, oh, you missed the pay period, or the second time it was, oh, something happened, I don't know why you didn't get yours. And finally, I was told, a couple months, a couple months ago, oh, you're just reserved, there's not enough budget, money in the budget. Um, so I was hired in under false pretenses, for the lack of a better term.
We both were.
We both were, and not only that, but the park people get paid. And I'm here carrying a gun, and now I'm here basically donating my time, carrying a gun for the village of Betsville. Um, and I have log sheets, no one's even told me how to even submit a time card, because they're not paying me, not at all. And I submitted pay, pay information two times, and it got lost the first time, and still nothing. So you want me to carry a gun, I'm sworn in to carry a gun, I'm, you know, I'm willing to risk my life for this, and I don't get one compensated dime, and yet I still show up for every shift, and I do it without complaint, I do it, um, not, not knowing if I'm gonna be able to return home to my three children, four children, if you count the one that's out of the house. So that weighs heavily on my heart, in the fact that I give a lot of my time, as we all do, and yet, there's not money in the budget for me to, or Stephanie, um, we don't, we haven't been paid, we've never been paid because there's not money in the budget, but yet, there's trainings that people go to, there's this that people go to, there's that that people go to, we've not received anything. And so I'm here to support Nick, and Sean, and the village of Betsville, and their police department, because if I didn't believe in what I was doing, I wouldn't be here, I have a full-time job, I'm a teacher by day. So that has to say something, that I do this for a reason. And yet, no one can give me that answer either.
Can I ask you, who told you that you were only reserved and...
Don Mason.
Okay.
Who, and, and I even offered to work a certain shift, I know, as Sean did as well. Um, I said I would come in after my school shift, after I teach, all day, I would come in from four to eight, and I was emphatically told, no, those were his hours between four and eight, he is chief, and he is on the books.
He made us get together amongst ourselves and work out a schedule that we both be able to be paid, and that wasn't on the same sched, same shift that we'd work out together, and we presented him with our schedules, and he told us no.
Do you have, do you have logs of what you've done? Do you have any?
I have, I, I have time sheets.
Time sheets, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, let's look at that through us, and let me just look at everything, so we understand what happened, because, you know, I don't know what Don did as far as some of that stuff, so let's...
I, I understand, now, my question to you is this, between Monday and Friday, from four to eight, when did you see him here?
I've been in Betsville for two and a half years, and I can count on one hand with fingers left over how many times I've seen him in full uniform, and this isn't about, this isn't about Don, Don's, Don's gone, I mean, that was his choice, whatever. It's just, like I said, in there, there's statements from, from all of us, you know, basically explaining all of our interactions with the previous administration, and I, I would appreciate if everybody would just read them and take them into consideration.
I, I can't speak for everybody, I'll, I'll speak for myself. For one, we don't want to cheat anybody out of anything. If you were working, you were promised something, we want to make it right, okay? That, that's, that's the first thing, that's, I, I think I can speak for the council that we want to do that, I don't think anybody here wants to do anything underhanded like that. Secondly, we, this is the first any of us have heard of anymore. You know, we, we are asked that we have representation from all the departments come to a council meeting, not everyone, but on occasion, so we know what the departments are doing. We send representatives of the council to the meetings, unfortunately, sometimes we only talk to the same people all the time. We don't want to do anything underhanded, we're, we're a bunch of very fair-minded people who live in this community, just like you do, that, that you, you get paid for what you do, we do the right thing, we hold our heads up. Okay, so make, uh, don't, don't make any misunderstanding.
And I'm not making a misunderstanding when it comes to this, but I know that this is the first time that I have mentioned this, that I, it's been brought before other people, and, nothing.
And we, I, I guarantee you, we will speak about this, I mean, we will talk about this, that way.
I, I do have a question for Gary, uh, last, last Tuesday when we discussed these issues, he assured me that the, the council had heard about it, and you led all of us to believe that their decision was based on all of this information, when in fact, that wasn't true. Uh, I'm, I'm just asking really for an explanation.
Were you saying that they didn't know?
All, all this, all this information, I mean, you can, you can tell, the look on everybody's face, that, that some of this information is new to them. Steve said he'd never heard any of it, a couple of the others, you know, said they had heard some, but not all.
Well, you gotta ask this question, if this, if this has been going on for a while, if there was an issue with the chief, on all respects, and anybody that's subordinate.
Sure, sure.
I mean, this, this should've been brought to attention too, a long time ago, you know what I'm saying, okay, now, now, this stuff comes to head, you know what I'm saying, so...
Right, alright, I was just...
I'm saying, because don't put it all on Gary, I mean, I'm saying, some of this stuff, you know, is, you know, like anything else, part of it comes out, so all of a sudden, all of a sudden, you guys have this position, where now you don't have this authority and position against you, now, now you're all coming out, all, all the way around.
Right, I guess, I guess my, my question was more generalized, you know, why, why was I told that you knew when in fact you didn't know?
I think, I can answer your question there, um, when, if, if you read my statement, um, we can go back to the very beginning of this, and I brought it to the correct people. I think, I can answer your question there. When, if you read my statement, we can go back to the very beginning of this and I brought it to the correct people. It wasn't council because there's a protocol for things. I don't go straight to council. Okay? It was brought up to the person responsible. That person did nothing about it. I brought it up to the next person. The mayor in front of you. Now, I'm bringing it up to you. There's steps I have to take. I'm not gonna just jump above somebody's head. Unless things are not getting done, that's when I start moving forward. Now, it's gotten this far. It can't go on much longer without something happening and the village being responsible for that something. So, I want to bring it to you guys so that you guys have 100% knowledge of what we've been dealing with.
I will say that we have addressed, when we had the previous administration, we had tried to address those above us. We had tried to address the issues that we were having. And it was met with memos, texting. There were no phone calls. There was never a face-to-face. It was, that's how things were handled. They put out a memo or they wrote a letter.
Well, you should have the documentation.
Sure. Absolutely. I was also told, in my opinion, and I don't have it written down, but I've got five people behind me that heard, that I was told that my opinion does not matter because I'm just a reserve now. I'm still here in the meeting.
It was never about a power trip. Like I told you guys before, I didn't want the job to begin with. I was doing it because it was the right thing to do. I've been here the longest. I was willing to step up to the job because you guys needed somebody to put that position. Obviously, you said, "What's the first?" She didn't want to do it. I was willing to step in to do that job for you guys. Okay? It's not, it's never about that because I didn't want it. It was about doing the right thing. I've been dealing with it for the last two years. It just, it's culminated now to this. And I hate the fact that, because I'm part of this village and I had to see you guys around town. I hate the fact that I know I'm gonna go up to the gas station, see one of you guys up there and wonder what you guys are thinking about me. Because, you know, I love this village just as much as you guys do. I would hate to see the village being dragged through the mud. Every county out there thinks that we are a joke. And do you know how much it hurts all of us? Because we take our job seriously. We want to be known as professionals and we are professionals. A lot of us do our job and do it correctly and do it the way it needs to be done. But the fact of the matter is, the village is gonna be dragged through the mud and we do not want to be part of that. We want to make sure the village's name is still out there and people still look at village. Oh, yeah, let's go out there Fourth of July. They always have a great Fourth of July. You know how many people, I never tell anybody else that this place is horrible for the Fourth of July. I always go out there, preach to them all day long. Come out the Fourth of July, man, it is a great show. It's better than all the places around here. You know, I love talking about the Betsville village. I grew up here. Like I said, I'm part of this town. This is my town. I love this town. You know, I could have moved away very easily. I was away and I came back. You know, this is where I grew up. I want to raise my kids here. So, I'd hate to see the village brought through the mud. And it's just to that point where we need to share this information with you because it's not going anywhere. And we want to make sure you guys know so you guys can stop this or at least have the knowledge so that if you guys choose not to stop it or if you guys choose to go forward with it, if it's not enough information that you guys decide to act on, then so be it. At least I can say, I can sleep at night saying I gave the party the recommendation.
That's all we're asking. Like I said, you gotta understand that we are affective.
The letterhead that you had spoke about prior, you know, we did quite a few changes, you know, better changes. I mean, at least we had Gary's condolences at the police department. We were gonna bring some stuff in. We were gonna donate time. And the letterhead that you're talking about, the letter that Nick had written, what we really tried to get across to everybody, because I helped him, you know, we kind of did it together, you know, that it's no longer, it's no longer Don's desk or chief's desk. There's no longer Melissa's desk or sergeant's desk. You know, it was workstations. I mean, you know, this, you can work here, you can work there. Everybody has a part. Everybody has a decision. And that's really what we were going for. We tried to talk to Melissa numerous times and we've had a couple of meetings trying to get her to come. She won't show up. And then finally, she showed up to the last one. And, you know, we got some things accomplished and she did, she did participate a little bit. But it was a collective decision, you know. We, Nick's company was gonna donate flooring at a discount price. And, you know, everybody had a decision. You know, we kind of narrowed them down as a team. And that's what we're really trying to convey to everybody. You know, we need to run like a well-oiled machine, you know, all six people firing. And that's the only way you're gonna prevail in life.
I absolutely agree with everything you just said. I understand the council. I come in here last month to a meeting and find out that everything that was going on in our police station, and I knew Don had left, okay? And I knew somebody was gonna be acting as interim. I found out on Facebook who that was, okay? And I start becoming concerned. And then I come into council and wow, I'm being hit with everything changing. And I'm supposed to be on one of the members of the governing board that's supposed to be making these changes.
I would blame that on your village administrator not disseminating the information in a good way.
I wasn't talking to you. I was talking to Sean.
Excuse me.
And I was very upset. And then when we talked about it in executive session, okay? We came out of executive session, we brought Nick in, and we told Nick of our decision. And Nick seemed a little bit broadsided by that. And I didn't know why, okay? But Nick reacted the way he did, said, and this is what you said, I'm sorry. You said, "Look, I want to do the best I can for Betsville, but it's a package deal. I gotta know I got somebody's got my back, okay? It's me and Sean or I'll stay as a patrol." Is that what you said?
I didn't use package deal.
You're not packing it to me.
I know what you're talking about.
It was used. Okay? Let's say it was used, okay? And to me, I took that as an ultimatum to the council, which a governing body cannot ever accept an ultimatum, okay? We have to govern with the best facts that we have. Up to that, that's all the facts any of us had, okay? We have these facts now. We're gonna delve into it. Rest assured, we will. We'll look at it very hard. I'm sure our solicitor will find out all this information and we will do the best, very best job we can possibly do for this community.
Absolutely. That's a definite one.
That's what we're gonna do. We're very serious about Betsville.
We absolutely want nothing more than what's best for the village.
What happened was, we walked into a, out of a drought and got hit with a flood here. And you gotta give us time to digest this and find out what's going on.
You have all the time in the world. Like I said, you will not see me at another meeting.
I'm not gonna give us all the time.
No.
Unless you request that.
We're not gonna give you all the time in the world. We don't want it to fester. We want to get it done.
Right.
We're here, believe me. We earn probably less a month off of Betsville than any of you, except for reserves. I'm sorry. We do it because we love the village. My children are here, grown, raised here. My grandchildren are here. And we're not playing on leave. So, make sure that everybody standing right there knows that we're honest people and want to do the right thing.
Yep. And we totally trust you guys to do the right thing now because now you have the correct information.
Settle down, cool down, and let us look at the information.
I just think everybody was kind of bad. Like you said, you know, Nick was kind of broadsided. Because I think Nick was under the impression that this information had already been available to you guys. And that, I mean, that was just kind of smack right in the face. You don't show I'm coming from though, right?
There may be people that thought we knew.
Sure. Sure. And that's what it was. That's what it was. And I understand that now.
If this is all decided, are you still going to be a captain?
You tell me, I guess.
I think this was the thing that was brought up, you know. I've been here 74 years. There's never been a captain in the city of Betsville, ever.
There's never been a sergeant before, three years ago also.
Yeah, and that's true. And that wasn't a change.
You know.
You know...
And we had told you before that the captain was what wasn't gonna fly.
At the meeting.
At the meeting.
At the meeting.
And that's why, I told you, that's why I turned down. I have no qualms about that. I just want you guys to have the information. I have no qualms about it.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that either. I mean, that's, you know, honestly, it's a lot less on my plate. Because for that three or four weeks that we were making some changes, I mean, Nick and I, I mean, we're used to working two days a month anymore. I mean, I was in here four or five weeks a week just doing a lot of stuff. And, you know, I recreated all the entire forms for the entire police department. Because OmniForm, what we currently use is a little outdated and not so much available anymore. I was kind of doing them all on Excel. So, we were doing a lot. And, you know...
I think another thing that you guys need to understand too is I don't think that, because you haven't been involved with the budgets, like you don't understand what the actual amount of money that there is to work with in the department. I mean, there's roughly $52,000 in there for the whole year for everything. It covers all the, so you understand it. So, it sounds like a lot of money, but when you throw a bunch of people at it, that money doesn't go very far.
No, I mean...
And so, that's the concern. I mean, because the problem is, the village was in financial dire straits.
Sure. Sure.
It wasn't, you know...
And that's why we did what we did. When we made the offer, that's why we did what we did and did not take a pay raise.
End up in dire straits again if you don't do our jobs.
The Microsoft Office program, I don't know if the village owns a copy, but, you know, I had to ask and a couple of people didn't know. I brought, my copy of Microsoft Office costs $360. I brought it in, put it on, you know, because I, it's not about, it's not about money. If anybody is working, for one, if anybody's working in law enforcement, period, to get rich, they're a fool, okay? Because law enforcement, anywhere you go, don't pay any money. And everybody, I think, at least all of us, know the financial restraint that Betsville does have based off the pay rate. And I've never heard one person really complain about the 785 minimum wage. I mean, there's people that are lifeguards, if I'm not mistaken, at the pool that make more than the police officers. And there's not one person that's complaining. I mean, do they like it? No. Nobody likes to come to work for 785 with a gun taser and have to wear bulletproof vests. But nobody complained about it because they come and did what they...
Well, there's more expense, money.
Sure. I mean, you gotta love your job. I mean, because if not...
I mean, there's other intangibles that you guys accept or you will be doing it. So, let's be honest. I mean, as you're moving forward, so...
I mean, I guess my point was, is nobody was about, nobody's about money. Nobody, I would work 20 hours, if it were under Nick previously, you know, this is how much respect I have for this man, that I would have been willing to work 20 hours a week for not a penny more. Because I have, because I wanted to see this place grow with Nick, not for me. I mean, I have no ties to Betsville. I like, I do, I like working in Betsville. But he loves this town more than anybody. You know, we've talked about that. I think everybody's well aware of that.
And the reason, you notice that it was pretty high tense when we first started. And it's starting to calm down now. And that's the reason why the council made a conscious decision to have the department heads come to the meetings once in a while. Because people who get to know each other don't fight. And we get along. There's a certain decorum that you have to have when you work together as an entity such as a village. And that's what we want. That's the reason why we asked that. And we want to continue it, so.
And it always works out better in this team than...
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I do want to bring up one more fact, that the very first meeting, when, I believe Don might have resigned on a Monday. And Nick come, you know, stepped up and presented the numbers, you know, on our behalf that following Tuesday. He was pulled off to the side by the mayor and the village administrator, said not to speak a word of what had happened. You know, we were, we have always been told that we don't, we don't talk to you guys. You know, I, I don't know how many times I've heard that, that we, I was told by the previous sergeant that we're not allowed to have a meeting with Gary. I was told by the previous sergeant that I wasn't allowed to talk to anybody on council. That's what I was told. You know, I don't want to...
The council members, but anybody wants to stop by the council, you can go there and say something.
I'll be honest with you. I was completely ignorant to, and still am to this day, after this one, of the proceedings at council meetings. And, you know, this, when I first started, you know, Gary had brought up, you know, police. I'm like, was that my cue or, you know, do I talk now? Or do I wait for you to say, "Go ahead and talk?" Or, you know, so I didn't...
Let's ask this question. Let's put it in another perspective here. I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I think, in all honesty, that any one of, any one of the people up here, no matter what, if they had something on their, a beef with somebody, just because somebody told you, said you couldn't do something, wouldn't stop you. Especially in a position that you're in. I mean, let's face it. I mean, if you got something on your mind, majority of people are gonna deal with it.
And the police department is like the military though. You follow orders. When you're given orders, you're expected to follow them. I'm not saying that I wouldn't do it because I personally would, because that's how stubborn I am. I will come up.
I think that is a problem if you treat like the military. And see, and what I'm saying is when you...
It's inherently like that.
Well, I think that's a problem in reality. Because that's kind of what's wrong with the police departments in the United States today. Because they're doing paramilitary operations. And look what's going on with the big cities. And that's where the problems are.
Absolutely.
And what happens, you become not a police force...
Standing army.
Standing army. And that's a problem. And that's exactly what we don't want to have in the village.
And that's what I'm trying to...
I want you to understand. So, I mean...
You gotta understand. I mean, I used to be an old SWAT junkie on USS Biddle. I'll see, I gave and took orders, okay? And I knew I was in the military, but there was a time I knew I wasn't in the military.
Exactly right. And that's why we broke protocol on family guys. Because it's the point where we can't obey orders anymore.
And we're on here for our well-being because often we're the ones who have to work under this. And coming into your department and not knowing what's going on, doesn't need to be like that. What's the job that we do have?
I just walk in and not know what I was going to expect. Because there's nothing. There's no notice. There's no... And the only information that I would get is a text message. That's it. No phone calls made, nothing. So, that's problematic. When you are supposed to be trusting somebody to help you through this, the training, or lack of training in some regards too. It just, that needs to be there. That needs to be there.
So, do you feel that this time is it totally broke? Can it be fixed?
I don't think it is totally broke. I think that there needs to be changes.
Exactly.
Curiosity, I had to work on Saturdays each this week. Who do we turn our time cards into? Do I have to call Melissa? Because that's basically who my superior officer is now. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. I have to go through her to...
I think the village administrator, don't you think, is not gonna do it?
Or she should be able to take care of it.
I guess, I guess...
He's not gonna, he's not gonna always match. But if I have a question...
No, we're talking time. We're talking about time.
Well, more or less, you know, I just turned my time sheet today. So, I didn't know who was gonna assign the supervisor. But because, you know, that was me last week, but now it's, but my question is more or less, you know, if I have a question while I'm on duty, who do I call? Who, is she still my superior officer? You know...
Who's in charge is really the question. I mean, there has to be somebody.
I think Melissa's in charge for right now. She's gonna resolve it. Because I think the issue is, we have to look at the facts. We have to figure out what we're gonna do. We have to figure out, you know, what changes we're gonna make within the organization.
I'm just working Saturdays. I just want to make sure I know.
We understand that. So, I mean, the problem is, we can't give you a definitive answer to some issues. I mean, I think we can just go with protocol the way it is right now, do it the way it is at this point in time, and then we'll give us a chance to digest the information.
So, where should I turn my time? I'm supposed to work on Sunday. Eight hours. Where? Okay.
Turn it over, then we'll try to get it resolved.
We'll just turn them into the...
And I want to have Gary and John get the information, then we'll try to get it resolved.
Because there's probably not enough money in there to pay Amy now. I guess what we gotta get sold for the new appropriations.
We gotta figure out, we gotta figure out what the numbers are.
So that we can pay her. I mean, that's simple.
Let's look at that.
That's what we have to do. If we owe Amy money, we owe her money.
Well, we'll make it whole. We have to make it whole. So, that's just the way it's gotta be.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Whoever's...
Do you have one too, Stephanie?
You're not trained though yet, right? Christmas is coming.
I've been here since August and I have yet to have the proper training because of Don and Melissa. I wasn't allowed to train. These officers were allowed to train with everyone else. I was only allowed to train with Melissa. And my work schedule, because I had two other jobs besides here, was, did not allow me to come in when Melissa was here to train. So, and for Don, I was not...
And you were supposed to ride with Nick last week or so and you called in and said you couldn't make it, right?
I worked last Saturday.
Or, well, what day? You told me she was supposed to ride with you.
It was not last Saturday, the Saturday before last, two times ago.
I do have another, I have two other jobs actually. That pays me. So, I'm gonna go and get my paycheck that they promised me. I have a living of my own and I have to make total...
I want to apologize on behalf of the entire department here that we got off a rough start, but I think we got accomplished tonight, giving you guys the information. I think that it's gonna hopefully, you guys can act on the information now. You guys can work things out. So, all we want to do tonight is give you guys the information and you guys have it, so.
And myself, I do sincerely apologize, Joyce.
You don't have to apologize.
Well, yes, I do. Especially between Joyce and I.
You all didn't think we thought something. We thought you knew something and we were both wrong.
It got, it got pretty bad. And I just want you to know, personally, from me to you, I do apologize.
Oh, she's a sweet girl.
I can see it.
I just hope you accept my apology.
I think you need to understand. We're not easy to push wrong because I think in the past, it was easy to roll over. And I think we're all trying to do the right thing.
Right. I mean, you know...
Because there's a lot of issues when we first came into the facilities and also when we tried to resolve. It's been going on for years and years. So, you can't, you can't deal with them all at the same time. We're in the same token. You know, again, we're going off with the information we have.
Sure. Sure. And, you know, there is, you know, and when anybody was trying to push anybody around, it probably came across that way because we're all just like, ah, swarming on you. But, I mean, it just, as long as, as long as you have this information, I mean, and there's, this is just a little bit of it. I mean, because copies are copies between a half years.
Well, I wanted to be honest with you. Like last week, when you said, you know, I gotta worry about my back, oh, my back, my back. So, I was really concerned that we was getting it up.
The old boy network.
Yeah, because...
That's what it sounded like.
Sounded like. And we all work together. Every single one of us...
And we all work together. Every single one of us in here, we all work together. There's been times that we had invited Melissa to join us and she.
Well, uh, one Tuesday, what, what night was it that, do you remember? That she, no? Oh.
I don't remember.
It was after Dunne's, I mean, we all had, had meetings and Melissa showed up.
I, I just want you guys, and basically what they're trying to say, we're, we're a team. And that's what we're trying to focus on when, when we're doing what we're doing. Um, is we wanted to make this more of a team department where everybody is accountable to everybody. It's not just, you know, one person, you know, you gotta go to her or you gotta go to me or you gotta go to him. It's you, you guys, we're all accountable to each other. We're in this together. We're gonna make this place run like a team. We're gonna make it run like a well-oiled machine. So that's basically all we wanted to get done with the department.
That's all I have. Anything else? Well, we thank you.
Again, we want to thank you.
We want to thank you for listening.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
I don't know, we should do something. Read it over and see if you get what.
Well, I think, and I think the other thing we gotta do is we gotta.
With all of any information, give it a car text stream.
We do a little background work since we're not using one car.
Yeah, yeah, if I can help at all, let me know. Travel safely.
Well, we, we want to make sure it's a great shooter's gonna tell us the truth.
Oh, absolutely.
And, and, and that's the other issue. I mean, when you get somebody in a position of power, it's, it's easy for them to, you know.
Yeah, it is. Especially in a, in a village like this where we all have our own lives and, uh.
Do you have a feeling they're, they're blaming Melissa for all of this?
I don't know. I don't know.
You gotta bring all parties.
Until, until I did justice, I don't know.
Well, I think the other thing is, I think you're gonna have to get Melissa and everyone to talk to her. So get her to say sorry as well. I don't mean as far as that goes, but.
There's a lot of accusations there that are gonna be dealt with.
And the other problem you're gonna have is that, I mean.
Why do we have all Don Mason and Melissa?
I haven't even looked at them.
Let's, let's bring that up in the second.
You got your coffee? You'll be in on this.
That's all right. I'll try and track one down sometime.
While we're on tonight, we'll just take it all home with him.
Another meeting at this month. We can get together and do it again and go to executive session and talk about.
Pressure planes have caused some delays. Well, next week I'm gonna be in Alabama, so I will be.
Let's go down there with them and have executive session.
It's colder than shit down here.
It's thirty-seven in Phoenix.
It's gonna be five tomorrow.
I got a pen, Chandler, down there right now.
So as long as we have a meeting before the thirty-first, right?
Yeah, as long, yeah, it can be a late meeting. I mean, you won't be down there the last week.
No, I'm just gonna be there next week. Next week we'll be down.
Just give us a call if you would please.
So you, you want to have an executive session or you just want to have, yeah, that's what I'm, this person, no, we got your, we're gonna do this.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know if we can get Rick here or not, uh.
Oh, Rick, where's the phone?
One of you guys got, all next week?
Next week, I'll be going.
The following week, Christmas.
Yeah, we'll have more applications than that.
I mean, there's, even if it's in between.
But we give a deadline of January fifteenth for the, the chief lease resume and stuff to be in.
Yeah, yeah, so that way you can make, you know, we can start lots of stuff and make a decision or figure out what direction we're gonna go with the people, what we got, what's available.
And that's fluid. I mean, if, if we don't get what we want, we can lose. But I think, I think we need to have a good executive session and have Rick here and we'll air this thing out and, um, then we'll come on and talk about what we're gonna talk about.
Yeah. If it do.
Thank you, boss.
Make it a motion.
Make the motion. NCIS is new tonight. Yay.
Oh, boy.
Yes, it is.
We could discuss this yet tonight.
I already adjourned, Mr.
We can readjourn, that's true.
You wanna stop? I'm like, my, my. My turn?
No.
Tell her to buy a new one.
It's only here, it's only here.
I just bought an iPad.
Price for a mine and a nightgear.
No, she'll have it broken week.
I had forgotten.
No.
I gotta fix one.
Well, I wanted to make sure I had enough people here.
No, that's fine. That's good.
What are you gonna do? What are you guys gonna do?
I got a grandson that I told I would be home at seven.